Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the special meeting, Development Commission's special meeting that's going to be discussing the continuation of the Isaguac Highlands Retail Site Development Permit, the Isaguac Highlands Medical Office Administrative Site Development Permit, and the Isaguac Highlands Self-Storage Administrative Site Development Permit. Before we get started with our direct examination, again, I would like to have the Commissioners look at the minutes from February 5th and February 6th. Would ask for any motions to be made.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of meeting minutes of February 5th, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on approval of the minutes of February 5th. Any discussion, comments, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of our meeting minutes from the February 6th, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does there any discussion? All those in favor of approval of minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So Ms. Carey, I think we're ready to start your direct examination of your witness.
Thank you. All right. Again, this is Jackie Carey for the record. Tia, hi, welcome back.
Thank you.
Tia, will you just confirm for us again that you are still testifying under oath, continuing on from your previous testimony in the prior hearings?
I am.
Thank you. So, the last time that we met, we left off in roughly the February 2018 timeframe. We were talking about a variety of events that happened early in February. Can you just kind of take us back a little bit and help us set the stage again for your testimony tonight? What was happening in February of 2018, just in general terms between Shelter and the city with respect to these applications that we're talking about?
So, with respect to the applications, they had been deemed insufficient several times. We were immediately responding and resubmitting, trying to address all of the issues that had been identified. The larger picture was that in early February, I believe it was February 2nd, the city sent out an email announcing that the administration had changed their recommendation with respect to the vesting language that would be included in the replacement regulations. So up until February 2nd of 2018, the city administration was recommending that the language that was proposed to be part of the replacement regulations would recognize vesting of site development permits and preliminary land use applications as they had been doing everywhere else in the city and, as they had previously cited, would allow the city to be in compliance with the West Main v. Bellevue case. So in February, on February 2nd, we received an email with the notice that the vesting language was going to be changed, although there were other applicants who received notice that that change was going to be made at various points before we did.
Do the replacement regulations, regardless of what they say, how do those impact vested rights?
They don't impact vested rights with respect to applications that were previously vested, like ours.
And so, was this, what's your understanding of what brought about this change in the replacement regulations around February 2nd timeframe?
Well, I think it says, it states that it's a change in the administration that precipitated that change, and so that was explained to us to mean that the new mayor who had taken office in January had changed the recommendation of the city.
Were you here in present to hear the opening statements that were made on behalf of the city by Mr. Lell?
Yes.
And do you recall, I'm paraphrasing, but the arguments regarding the end of the build-out period and the end of the development agreement, termination of the development agreement overall?
Yes, generally.
Can you summarize just kind of what you heard in terms of that argument?
Well, the arguments that we've heard, I think primarily from Mr. Lell in the context of this hearing, were new to us because the city is now taking the position that the build-out period had some significance that is neither included in the actual words that are in the development agreement, nor was it ever explained to us or to anyone else to have that significance. So, basically, from what I've heard in the context of this hearing, the city is saying that somehow applications that were deemed complete prior to the end of the build-out period are to be treated differently than applications deemed complete during the term of the development agreement, but after the build-out period. And the thing that makes that a particularly hard argument to put much faith in is that there have to be land use regulations that apply to our property at all times. The development agreement was the mechanism that enacted the land use regulations or development standards that applied to our property. Those were the only standards that applied to our property or that were available for us to use from the time the development agreement was enacted, all the way through the end of March 2018. So, to say that somehow you could only vest prior to the end of the build-out period really makes no sense because you would be saying that the only development regulations, those that were enacted through the development agreement, didn't apply for some period of time. So, does that answer the question?
Is it right that the build-out period ended in September of 2017?
Yes.
Or 2018?
No, 2017.
2017.
Yes.
And so, you have September of 2018 going forward. If the arguments that you just reiterated to me were true, what would that mean for development regulations on Shelter's property?
Can you restate that question?
Sure. So if the build-out period ends in September, and we know that the development agreement didn't terminate until March 2018, if the city's argument were accurate, as you just paraphrased, what regulations would be covering Shelter's property in the meantime?
I don't know. If the development agreement didn't apply between the end of build-out and the effective date of the replacement regulations, then there would be no regulations that governed our property.
Is that consistent with your understanding of Washington state law and what it would require for development regulations?
No. Washington state law requires that you have development regulations in place, particularly in a GMA area. But also, it's inconsistent with the terms of the development agreement. The development agreement is really clear that it continues to be effective until it terminates, and it gives a very specific instruction for how it terminates. And I think both the city and we agree that it didn't terminate until the end of March 2018. So to put some significance that is not there on the end of a build-out period is just, I mean, it strikes me as an attempt to go back and justify actions that city staff and administration took, in hindsight, after they've, after they already took those actions.
And just for clarification, you mentioned the acronym GMA a minute ago. What does that stand for?
The Growth Management Act.
So, you may recall from the last hearing, we had some larger packets of materials that we were introducing. We've got a couple more of those tonight. So we're going to move through them in the same manner as using an exhibit number and then parts A, B, C, D to delineate the subparts. on any other applications besides, we talked last time about the medical office building, there was an office space, and then also the retail. What else was going on?
So, the other application that we worked on was the storage application, and that one was slightly behind the medical office and the retail and the office building.
Okay. So, the next exhibit that we're going to add into the record is going to be Exhibit S-72, and then we'll start working on the subparts. So, this first one will be S-72A.
This is the Administrative Site Development Permit Level 1 and 2 Review Submittal Requirements Checklist, and it is annotated as it was submitted with our application.
Okay. And then S-72B?
This is the SEPA envelope determination, and I think I described it in my earlier testimony, but this was a statement that references the SEPA analysis had already been done for the development with the development agreement.
Okay. And S-72C?
S-72C is a GeoTech report.
And was that prepared as part of the application for the storage?
Yes, this was part of that application as well. S-72D is the stormwater report that was part of the application for the storage administrative site development permit. S-72E is the main package that was submitted for the self-storage facility. So it includes the plans, the site plan, the views from around the site, some preliminary engineering, landscaping, parking layout, internal unit layout, elevations, things of that nature.
Okay. So, and that's what I just pulled up on the screen here. Is that the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. And then, that was S-72E. So S-72F is our next one.
So, S-72F is the public notice site plan. So it's part of the application that's required, and it's the, it's a site plan that would be used for posting the site and for public notice.
Okay. S-72G?
This is the affidavit of ownership and affidavit of agent authority that were part of the application. S-72H is a letter from Isaguac Highlands Community Association that is the ARC or the Architectural Review Committee approval for the storage proposal.
What does that process look like? You said the Architectural Review Committee, ARC. What does that entail?
So, to get the ARC approval, you bring your preliminary package in front of their committee, give a presentation, have a discussion with them, and then if they have comments, they'll give them to you. If they have changes they want to see, they'll let you know. And then ultimately, what you're seeking is their approval of your basic architectural design.
And then S-72I?
S-72I is the design narrative that was prepared by Jackson Maine Architecture, who's our consultant on this project.
And so the project narrative, what purpose does that serve?
It's a required element of the administrative site development plan, but it goes through what the goals are and then how we meet those goals. So things like site planning, architectural expression, pedestrian environment, and landscaping, building material colors, et cetera.
S-72J?
S-72J is the land use permit application for the ASDP. S-72K is a title commitment from First American, and again, is a requirement of submittal. S-72L is transportation memo analyzing the Block E storage facility, and it's prepared by Transpo Group, our transportation consultant. S-72M is a memorandum from Transpo Group, and it is specifically about a parking modification request that we submitted for the self-storage facility. S-72N is a land use application for the self-storage facility.
And who's the person that listed themselves as applicant on there?
Looks like William Bilyeu is listed as the applicant, and he's with Jackson Maine Architecture, who is our architect and our consultant running point on this project.
Thank you. So that is the end of S-72 as an exhibit. And so, Tia, that whole package that we just went through, what was that?
That was the initial submittal for the storage project, for the administrative site development permit.
So following submission of this, did you receive any sufficiency letters from the city?
We did. We received a letter of insufficiency.
I'm going to pull up what is Exhibit C-24. And so that should be, Tia, in your binder here.
Okay.
So is C-24 one of the letters of insufficiency for this project?
It is.
And what's the date of this one?
This letter is dated February 23rd, 2018.
Can you run through, again, it doesn't have to be every single line, but kind of the highlights of some of the insufficiency comments that you got in this letter?
Yes. So, the first one fits in the category that we've previously discussed, which was basically saying that certain elements don't exist because the plat isn't approved yet. And this one actually references that the letter agreement that was ultimately signed by Shelter and, or by IHIFC and the city in March, it references that it was not signed yet, and that that's part of the insufficiency. It also includes a lot of things that we thought were and think are very minor and not like anything we've ever been called out on for purposes of determining an application insufficient. So, one of them is that the PDF size is slightly larger than is technically allowed by the checklist. Another is that on the submittal checklist, it says these, the not applicable items, these were blacked out, which made review for concurrence difficult. In the future, please strike with a finer line or otherwise retain the legibility of the item for staff's reference. While we understand that as a comment, putting that in the letter as a basis for insufficiency seemed pretty unusual and absurd.
So as a practical matter, I mean, going back to number two, the size of it, something that was 106 megabytes in size, I mean, is it your understanding that that was ultimately successfully submitted to the city so they were able to see it?
Yes.
Are there any other highlights that you wanted to talk about in this letter?
I don't think so. I mean, actually, there's things in here like that we struck rooftop screening as not applicable, but they're actually asking us to clarify that no equipment would be located on the roof or provide the required information. So, I mean, it just, it was, it was a combination of sort of ticky-tacky little things and things that are easily and typically handled within the review process, not as a basis for deeming an application complete.
And then, number five on this list references a request, request a modification to the parking standards, which is an AMM. And I think we talked a little bit about this last time, but can you describe again what an AMM is, and then put that into context here for us?
Sure. An AMM is an administrative modification. And so what that is, is the, at the administrative level, the staff can make modification, certain modifications to some of the development standards if an applicant requests a modification and meets the criteria that are set forth in the development agreement. So, this was, this comment was telling us that because we were asking for a modification with respect to the parking standard, that we needed to follow the development agreement, because again, it's the only set of regulations that existed at the time, and submit the AMM following the process in the development agreement, which we did with our resubmittal. And the reason we were asking for an administrative modification is that the standards in the development agreement required much, much more parking than any storage facility actually needs, and so that was the issue. So we were providing the parking studies and the documentation to show that the appropriate amount of parking could be provided.
So this reference to the, it says, "Please review the submittal requirements listed in this section, as well as the approval criteria in the development agreement," in parentheses, "Appendix O, comma, Section 10," and parentheses, "against the transpo memo provided to ensure that the necessary materials are included." So what did you understand to be the applicable development regulations to this application at this time?
Well, the development regulations that were enacted by the development agreement, because again, they were the only regulations that there were, and then this letter also, I mean, confirms that and tells us to follow the development agreement.
So is that just coming from your opinion or also what the city's saying?
Both.
And then in Section 4, there's also a reference here, I'm looking at, it's the last section of Section 4, so it's actually on page 2. It says, "Also ensure that the documents you are referencing are from the development agreement and not the ARC's architectural standards." Is that a similar issue to what you were just talking about in terms of what we discussed with Section 5, excuse me, of that letter?
I think it is, because again, it's the city instructing us to follow the development agreement.
So we've got another packet of materials. This will be S-73, and then we'll do the subparts again, like we just did. And so for starters, Tia, so after you received the sufficiency letter that we were talking about, what did Shelter do next, with respect to the storage application?
We immediately got our team to work on addressing all the issues that were raised and get a resubmittal submitted as soon as possible.
Okay. So this is going to be S-73A. Will you describe what S-73A is, please?
Yes. So this S-73A is the main packet of plans, elevations, and information that is, was resubmitted for the storage facility. So it has an update on it that says ASDP application corrections and a date of 2/27/2018.
Okay. Let me pull that one up so we can take a look at it while we're there. So, and the date on that, so that was, is it right that that's a couple days later from the sufficiency letter we were just talking about?
Yes.
And this will be, this next one will be S-73B. And what's the documented S-73B?
So S-73B is the ASDP submittal narrative, and it's dated February 28th, 2018.
So did they, did your consultants in Shelter update the narrative that we were talking about before?
I would assume so.
This next one is S-73C.
is the AMM request form.
Does that relate to the parking standards that you described a minute ago?
It does.
And then S-73D? This one's marked.
S-73D is the land use application form for the self-storage proposal.
This is S73E.
S73E is the updated transportation memo for the storage proposal. S73F is the updated memorandum regarding the administrative parking modification request. This S73G looks like it is generated out of mybuildingpermit.com and is the administrative modification or administrative adjustment of standard that we were requesting for the parking standards.
This is S73G.
Wait, that was G.
Oh, sorry about that. S73H. Thank you.
S73H is a sufficiency determination with respect to the AMM for the parking requirements. And so this, this letter states that based on the development agreement, that it, that permit had been determined to be incomplete or insufficient. And then the specific basis for that determination was, it states that it, that the development agreement, Appendix M, requires that the master developer approve the AMM request so that city staff can process it. Please obtain master developer approval from John Shaw at Heartland and provide the city with written documentation of that approval. We had, had and have provided that approval to the city and the city has on multiple occasions received from both us and from John Shaw at Heartland, who represents Port Blakely, as well as from Port Blakely's attorney, Tom Goltz, very clear statements that, that we as property owner and designated successor under the development agreement have, do not require master developer approval for this and other issues.
So looking at this, was there, was there any basis outside of the development agreement for the city's insufficiency letter?
No, the only one that was cited was that we didn't have master developer approval.
So what was your understanding of the development regulations that were being applied to your application at this time?
Again, it was the, the development regulations that were enacted by the development agreement because they were the only ones. And the city specifically cites to the development agreement and to the appendix, to one of the appendices of the development agreement and instructs us to follow those.
Okay, this next one is S73I. And what's that document?
S73I is the administrative site development permit, Level 1 and 2, review submittal requirements. And again, this one is annotated because it was submitted with one of our submittals.
Next one is S73J.
S73J is a letter from Jackson Maine Architecture to Jean Lin at the city. And it is response to the pre-application comments that we eventually received from Ms. Lin.
Do you recall when the pre-app comments were received?
I believe they were received on the same date as the insufficiency letter, so I think that was February 23.
What implications does that have for the permit process when you get the pre-app comments on the same day as an insufficiency letter?
Well, I mean, typically you would get pre-app comments right after a, a pre-app meeting happens and, and would incorporate those in your application submittal. But in, in this case and in the case of our permits, the city was taking so long to issue the pre-app comments that we went ahead and submitted the applications prior, in most cases, prior to receiving the pre-app comments in, in written form. Obviously, we received some feedback at the pre-application meeting itself.
Going back to something that we discussed earlier in your testimony, under the development agreement, Appendix L, are pre-app meetings required for these applications?
No, they're not. And, and it was, it seemed pretty unusual, the amount of time that, that the city took to issue the pre-app comments on our SDP and ASDP applications. Because I think on our plat application, we got, I think it was a week or less before we got, between the pre-app meeting and when we got the pre-app comments. And in the case of most of our SDP and ASDP applications, it was more like six weeks.
And just again, for clarification, you testified a minute ago that the Appendix L of the development agreement does not require the pre-apps. So why was Shelter going through the pre-app process?
The city was requiring us to do the, the pre-apps.
So the next one will be S73K.
S73K is a letter from Jackson Maine Architecture dated February 27, 2018 to Lucy Sloman. And it is in response to the sufficiency determination.
And then S73L looks similar, but maybe we can explain kind of the difference between those. So this is S73L. And can you explain what that document is?
So S73L is also a letter from Jackson Maine Architecture to the city. It's dated February 28, 2018, and it is the design narrative. So it's separate from the, S73K is responding to the specific things that were called out as the basis for insufficiency of the application. And this is actually, this S73L is actually the updated design narrative. So S73M is a non-residential sewer use certification, which appears to be a King County form.
And if you could do me a favor, can you hand me back the copies of L and K? I just want to take a look at them really quick. So this next one is S73N. Thank you. What's this document at S73N?
S73N, so...
Mr. Chair, remember for a second, we've got a J and a K that look to be the same document, and a K's single page and the J is two pages?
Let me take a look at them and make sure.
Looks like this is the double sided and it's a single sided of the same letter.
Yeah, let me, let's make sure that we've got the right ones because they're back to back. So is this your only?
If you go with those, we'll, we'll take care of the duplicates just so you can figure out which one you meant to use.
So this one is different, that one, L. Okay, I'll look at it if you guys do make sure to work in the middle. So you've got the correct one, J.
I've written on this and I don't have a clue.
Okay.
So it's February 27, 2018. A letter to Ms. Sloman written by, appears to be William, by the way, it looks not signed.
Okay, that's different. So that's your K?
Yes.
That's different than what they have. So let's make sure we've got the right ones.
So K is this one. And these two are the same, I think. This was K. So it should be the sufficiency determination and addressed to Lucy Sloman.
So theirs is mixed up then.
And to complicate it more, if these two are the same thing, N, and what you were just going to introduce is J.
Okay, let's focus on this one first. We'll do one at a time. So I think they got duplicates and that's it of, of these. So J is correct. K, I don't think you have, because that's the Sloman letter that you have. I don't think you have a copy of that yet.
By the Sloman letter, you mean the letter by Mr. Bydl, two is Sloman.
Two is Sloman, correct.
February 27.
Yeah, so I think that there was just a mix up in the stack. So, so J is correct because that's the February 27 to Jean Lin.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll just be missing K.
So we'll get you a copy in a second here. So I think I've got one over here.
Or K. The Jean Lin.
To Ms. Sloman.
And that's K. That's fine. Oh, you're missing K.
We're missing K.
Okay, so, so you, because there's a lot of...
We need to find them at K.
Just reading off maybe something a little bit more sophisticated.
I think we have K.
Mine starts, for example, on...
I never had J. I think we figured it out.
73K.
73K, okay, perfect. So that's the one that they're missing.
I think we might have found it because we got three Js and one K. So I think this must be the, the K.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we're caught up.
Okay, great, thank you, everyone. So then, Tia, we just got to sort out what we've got over here.
So then N, I think, is the same as J. It's got the same date. Which page are you on? It's different.
Well, just here, flip the bottom page.
Yeah, this is the same letter. So that's J. So N, you don't need to...
N, we don't need. Okay, thank you. So this was, do you have your K already?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to take these away.
J, K, L, M.
And then we were about to start on N.
Yes.
Okay, but we're going to skip N, well, with the document that we were going to talk about. And actually, I think, with all that confusion, we've reached the end of the pile anyways, so that's good. Thank you for bearing with us on that. So that's S73, and that's the conclusion of it would have been on Exhibit M. You guys, and Zach and Jeff, you guys have the documents as well? Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, so that packet, S73 and all the subparts, can you remind us again, what, what was that in its entirety?
So that packet was a resubmittal of our storage application, which happened, I think, on February 28, 2018.
So after you did the resubmittal, did you get additional sufficiency letters from the city for the storage application?
We did.
Let's turn and take a look at those. The first one that I'm going to pull up is C25. Is this one of the letters, the sufficiency letters for storage?
Yes, it is. Well, actually, C25, it looks like, is the sufficiency determination of incomplete, insufficient for the AMM. So I think it might actually be the same as S73H.
Got it, okay, so we've talked about that one. And then the other one would be C26?
Yes, C26 is an insufficiency determination for the self-storage building ASDP submittal.
Okay, and can we do the same thing of run through some of the insufficiency comments in this letter?
There's only one comment in here and it references, it says, many required submittal requirements do not exist at this time because the plating process to establish this property is not complete. And then it gives some examples. And then it says, however, in our dispute resolution meeting on February 6, 2018, there was agreement that Shelter Holdings Attorney Patrick Mulaney of Foster Pepper and the city attorney Jim Haney of Ogden Murphy Wallace will edit a draft letter provided by Mr. Mulaney. The signed form of that letter lays out the terms under which the city will accept the submittal prior to completion of the plating and deem it complete within the vesting framework referenced in the letter, without certain submittal requirements being provided in their recorded final and approved form. So this was, again, the argument that Ms. Sloman was making, that she would not accept an application for a site development permit until the plating was complete. And it's a little bit unclear, but I think it seems to indicate that she's talking about not only preliminary plat, but also final plat, which, if you remember, are what we talked about several, several nights ago now, could be years down the road. The final plat isn't recorded until after the plat is actually built and all the infrastructure is, is in place.
And this letter that it's referencing, if, if you could turn to Exhibit S36, it's Is this the, the letter agreement that that sufficiency letter is referencing, that it wasn't prepared at that time, but that it eventually was prepared?
Yes, it, it is that letter. And I think it was prepared at that time because the, it may not have been in its final form, but it had been prepared much earlier than that, I think in, in January or maybe even December.
Thanks for that clarification. And we'll, we'll turn back to this letter in a minute. I just wanted to check to see if we were talking about the same thing. Thanks for that clarification. Um, and we'll, we'll turn back to this letter in a minute. I just wanted to check to see if we were talking about the same thing. Let's take a look at a new exhibit, exhibit, uh, S-74. And I'm actually gonna hand you two exhibits. What, the first will be S-74 and the second will be S-75. We'll explain both of them as we go here. First one's S-74. And if you could explain, um, what the exhibit S-74 is, please?
Uh, yes, so S-74 is a letter that I submitted to the Land and Shore Committee on March 1, 2018. Um, and it was in response to, um, the packet that was prepared by staff for that Land and Shore meeting where they would be discussing the end of the Isequa Highlands Development Agreement.
Okay. And why did you submit this letter?
Um, I submitted the letter because I was concerned that the Land and Shore Committee and the public were not getting accurate and complete answers to the questions and issues that had been raised. And because we were continuing to participate in the public process related to, um, everything that related to our project, our, our property, um, including the replacement regulations that were being proposed.
And then, uh, S-75, what's, uh, what's this document? What's that letter?
Um, this letter, which is also one that I submitted on March 1, 2018 to the Land and Shore Committee, is, is more specifically, um, on vesting. There had started to be a lot of discussion on, on vesting, um, and the, the council members on that committee were asking for information. So this was in response to some of the questions that had been asked.
And what did you explain to them about vesting?
Well, I mean, I, I in, in the first section of the letter, I tried to address what vesting is. And so it states that "The vested rights doctrine refers generally to the notion that a land use application under the proper conditions will be considered only under the land use statutes and ordinances in effect at the time of the application's submission." And that's a quote from Noble Manor versus Pierce County case. Um, and then it goes on to, to talk about the purpose of vesting and providing certainty and predictability in land use regulations, and the fact that development rights are recognized as valuable property interests under Washington state law. It also went on to clarify that the development agreement does, in fact, address vesting because staff was telling them, them being, uh, the council members and the public, otherwise. As you've seen, I think, in the earlier, um, slides that were presented, they were stating that it didn't provide any guidance on, on vesting when, in fact, it actually provided quite a lot of, of guidance on vesting. There also, the, the council members had been asking for, um, the city attorney's position on vesting. And what came out in the packet of, that was public, was, um, a very generic memo on vesting law. It didn't once mention the development agreement or the fact that, that there was a vesting provision in the development agreement. So while it addressed vesting generally, it really didn't provide any guidance with respect to the specific, uh, situation that the, the council was dealing with at that time. Also called out that, that, um, the city's position that vesting naturally terminates at the end of the contract had no support in Washington state law or in the development agreement. And despite having asked for that, the, that no one at the city was providing that. And there seemed to be just a general confusion at the council level as to the, the items that vest per state law. So state law requires that plaits, building permits, and development agreements vest. And so there was confusion between that and the concept of complying with Washington state law. So what we were trying to do was to say yes, there are those three categories are things that Washington state law requires the city to acknowledge as, as vested. But you also are required to follow Washington state law generally. And, and some of the ideas that had been proposed or floated as options in the, the documentation or, um, explanations from staff were, in fact, not legal.
So absent this interpretation from the city that the replacement regulations that were ultimately adopted divest, to use their term, shelter of their vested rights, um, do the replacement regulations actually have any impact on your vested rights? I mean, a lot of the letters that we're just talking about are talking about the replacement regulations, but what impact should there be on your vested rights in your understanding?
Well, we have, we have vested applications. We had vested applications at the time the replacement regulations were adopted and effective. So they really should have no impact. The replacement regulations should have no impact on our projects. The, I think the interpretation that they retroactively take away our vested rights is particularly, um, absurd because they don't say that they do that. When you read the, the regulation itself, it doesn't say that it retroactively takes away vested rights. It doesn't say that it applies retroactively. It just acknowledges that there are three things that the city is required to, required to recognize as vested, the building permits, plaits and short plaits. And development agreements are specifically listed as the third item. We vested under a development agreement. So even if, under some scenario, you were trying to retroactively apply regulations that didn't exist at the time our applications were submitted to our application, it still says that you vest to the development agreement. So I've never quite understood the city's logic in pointing to the replacement regulations as a basis for divesting our projects.
A minute ago, when you were describing, um, the March 1 letter at S-75, um, you talked about predictability and certainty as part of, of vesting law. Um, if the city were, were right in its arguments that we've heard here so far, what impact would that have on predictability and certainty for, for Shelter and, um, for other developers or property owners in your experience?
Um, well, I think there's maybe two parts to that question. One, if, if a city or any legislative body has the ability to retroactively take away vested rights, that turns all land use and development in Washington state upside down. I mean, there, everything that I know and have experienced about land use law is wrong, and we're changing all the rules. It would have major, major implications on development in Washington state. If you're talking about this other concept about vesting naturally terminating at the end of a development agreement, I think that that also has, has major implications on land use law in Washington and on the desirability or viability of using a development agreement, which is intended to be a tool to allow cities and developers to, or property owners to work collaboratively together to find, um, the best result for the community. Um, and if a developer cannot rely on the terms of the development agreement or the term of a development agreement, it, it becomes useless and it won't, it won't be something that developers will pursue. And I think that would be unfortunate because there's a lot of good development that's happened as a result of development agreements.
You also mentioned a minute ago, um, the the presentations or representations, um, that the development agreement doesn't say anything about vesting by city staff. And we've heard about that from other witnesses a little bit, too. Um, but I'd like to introduce another exhibit. This will be S-76. And we can talk about that a little bit more. So what's the, um, what is the document at S-76?
S-76 is a PowerPoint presentation, um, dated March 1, 2018 for the Council Land and Shore Committee. So this would be the same, um, meeting at which I provided the, the two letters that we just talked about as S-75 and S-74.
And if you flip through it, I, I believe it's on the last page of this. Um, there is, yeah, it's the very last page, 33. There's a slide titled Vesting. Um, can you tell us more about this slide and what it provides?
Um, well, the first sentence says, "Why is vesting in the rest of the city more lenient?" And my understanding is that that's a reference to the fact that, uh, staff was acknowledging that everywhere else in the city, they were planning to continue their current, um, procedure of, or policy of recognizing that vesting happens at complete preliminary land use application because that was, uh, necessary in order to comply with the West Main v. Bellevue case. The first bullet on the page says, "The development agreement does not provide regulations or guidance on vesting of projects." That's just flat out not true. The, the next bullet was, "Property owners knew the development agreement had a specific build-out period or term." That's true, but it doesn't really have anything to do with vesting. The third is, "Vesting projects to outdated standards is not in the best interest of the community." And the fourth partnership, "The partnership with the master developer for good design standards expires with the agreement."
So that last point expires with the agreement. Um, it obviously doesn't say specifically what it's talking about, but, um, is, what was your understanding of this expiration with the agreement and how that affected vested rights from, from the city's perspective at this time?
Um, I think they were trying to imply that the master developer had a continued level of control over developments that were occurring in Isequa Highlands that, that actually was not there. I don't think it's accurate to say that the, all the design standards expired because there was still the, you know, the CCNRs or the covenants, conditions, and restrictions were not expiring, and those continue to be implemented through Isequa Highlands Community Association. And particularly with respect to our property, but also with respect to the other properties that had been sold off by the master developer. There just wasn't any element of master developer control over design standards, which they were telling the, the council and the public that there were.
Going back to that, the first point that you brought up, "Why is vesting in the rest of the city more lenient?" You mentioned, you know, the rest of the city versus, um, versus what?
Versus, let's see. At, at this point in time, I believe that the Isequa Highlands, um, had been separated from Talis in terms of the termination of the development agreements because both had termination of development agreement and replacement regulations being adopted on similar timeframes. And at some point, they split the two. But they were, I think, planning to treat them the same for purposes of most of the code, including the vesting provision. So they were saying the, the vesting in the rest of the city would refer to everywhere else outside of those two urban villages for which the development agreements were being terminated.
So for the Highlands, the Isequa Highlands, um, what, what properties remained to be developed and would need to benefit from vesting? Specifically just in the Highlands area versus the rest of the city?
Um, there's very few undeveloped properties left in Isequa Highlands. I think there's some information in one of the exhibits that we've already talked about that showed a chart of all of the properties that were left undeveloped. At this point in time, so as of March 1, I believe that the only two properties that they, that the city staff was saying would potentially be left unvested if the city went with the vesting language and interpretation that the staff was, again, at that point in time, recommending, would be our property and the City Surf property. The City Surf property, the city later changed position and decided to recognize vesting for them at the last minute, the day, day before, two days before, the, um, replacement regulations were adopted. So that left us and our property as the only property with applications pending that the city was not going to recognize as vested to the development agreement.
Then this first point, "The development agreement does not provide regulations or guidance on vesting of projects," I think in your first binder here.
This one?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna make sure we get the right exhibit number. So we're looking at S-25. Um, and that's the excerpts from the development agreement that we talked about the first night that you testified. Can you point out a couple of examples of where the development agreement provides for regulations or guidance on vesting of projects?
Sure. So section 3.23 is titled Vesting of Development Standards and Mitigation.
And then going to this second bullet point where it says, "Property owners knew the development agreement had a specific build-out period or term." You said it's true that, you know, that you knew that there was a build-out period or term. But what, what implications does that have under the development agreement?
So after the build-out period, the development agreement continues in place. The only change is that the city is allowed to adopt changes to the development standards in the development agreement or to terminate, or either the city or the master developer could terminate the development agreement. So we knew that both of those things were possible, but we also knew that there's a required process for the city to enact those new ordinances. So the development agreement continues until it terminates by enacting, by the city enacting the replacement regulations.
Can you look specifically at section 3.2, 3.2 of the development agreement in, uh, S-25? of the development agreement in S-25? And you just explained it in terms of the build-out period, but what does that provide for in that section?
It specifically is talking about after the build-out period. And it says, "The development standards shall continue to apply to all applications for implementing approval submitted after expiration of the build-out period. Except either party may terminate this agreement and the zoning and development regulations may be modified as provided in Section 5.13." So that's what I was just describing, that everything stays the same and continues to apply unless and until something is modified per 5.13. And 5.13 is the term section of the development agreement. And that's where it outlines how the city goes about adopting replacement regulations to terminate the agreement. And even there, it says, "No sooner than six months after the notice of termination, they have to hold public hearings prior to adopting the new zoning." So under any scenario, the development agreement contemplates that there's a period after build-out where the development agreement needs to still apply because the development regulations under the development agreement are the only thing that can apply to this property until new regulations are implemented.
I think if you don't mind, we're at a pretty clean spot to take a break, if that's okay. It's 7:41, so about an hour in, a little over an hour. Is that okay with you? Will we continue if you would like to, either way?
I was going to ask for that. So I appreciate the recognition of that. And I would offer that we take a break for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
All right, we're back on the air and back in session.
Okay, thank you. So Tia, we left off a minute ago talking about a couple of documents from March 1. We were looking at the PowerPoint from the March 1, 2018 Land and Shore meeting. Do you recall whether you were present at that meeting?
I don't believe I was. I think Patrick Mulaney of Foster Pepper, our outside land use council, attended that meeting, both because I was sick, but also because I received an email from council member Stacy Goodman, I think in the afternoon before that meeting, letting me know that she had decided to allocate the three-minute time limit that they put on people making public comment, that she had decided that she was going to allocate it on a group-by-group basis so that we would only get a total of three minutes for however many people came to speak on behalf of IHIFC. And she said that she wanted to call that out to us because we typically brought more than one person to participate in the public process.
Or was this meeting, the March 1 meeting, was it videotaped?
Yes.
And did you review the video and watch it after the fact?
Yes.
And did you also review the slides that we were just talking about at S-76?
Yes, I've reviewed the slides and the packet that went into the meeting, obviously.
So next, I'd like to turn to new exhibit S-77. Tia, what is this document?
S-77 is an email from Sarah Beth Levine to me. Sarah Beth works in my office and is part of the development team. And she had gone to the city to drop off the application fee for the storage ASDP. And the person at the desk and, as well as the permit technician that was there, refused to accept the application fee and then told her while she was there that they wanted to give her back two previous checks that she had dropped off because our applications were denied. And so she, Angie Aldrich, the permit technician, gave Sarah Beth the two previous checks that she had submitted and as well as the check she was attempting to submit that day and asked her to take them back as the city was refusing them. And this was on March 14, 2018. So this was before the replacement regulations had been adopted. And it was surprising to me that the city would refuse the checks and that they were giving back checks that they had accepted months and months earlier when we had submitted our applications for the medical office building and the retail SDP.
So this also says that the applications were denied. What's your understanding of what it means to have a denied application?
Well, a denied application would mean that it was not approved. And, I mean, I didn't know how to take that.
Is that consistent with your understanding of how the sufficiency letters worked in that process? Or is that something different to you?
Well, I mean, the sufficiency letters, we had been going back and forth. I mean, we had been submitting and getting insufficiency letters for several months at this point. We had the letter agreement pending city signature at that point. So this all just seemed very bizarre to reject application fees and then to also state that the applications were denied.
So that was March 14. There was another document at S-40, if you can turn to that. I believe it was dated March 14 as well. So Patrick Mulaney testified about this document a few evenings ago. Can you describe again what this document is, please?
So S-40 is a letter from Patrick Mulaney addressed to Keith Niven regarding city transportation impact fee credit proposal.
Do you recall why this was provided? Or just kind of what the purpose of this was?
Well, I think that Mr. Niven had suggested that we draft a proposal to get some sort of discounted impact fee credit for traffic mitigation fees that had already been provided per the development agreement. And so Patrick Mulaney was writing back to Mr. Niven to explain that because our
before the Development Commission or the Urban Village Design Commission." What's your understanding of what that meant?
Sorry, where are you? Let me read this. So, okay, so following preliminary plat approval, the city's goal is four to six months for ASDP review and six to nine months for SDP review because of the added procedural requirement of appearing before the Development Commission or the Urban Village Design Commission. So that was just describing that there was process for consideration of SDP applications. That actually would not apply to all of them. It would have only applied to the SDP applications, not the ASDP.
Is that, where are you getting that from? That it would only apply to one versus the other?
Oh, because the development agreement provides that only the site development permit applications go in front of a commission. The ASDPs are administrative and thus supposed to be approved by the administrative staff.
Let's then turn to exhibit S-38, which was, I believe, the next day after that letter was dated. Can you describe what S-38 is for us?
Yes, S-38 is an email to Keith Niven from Patrick Mulaney and it copies Jim Haney and myself and Pat Schneider. And it's regarding Shelter's response regarding city partial traffic impact fee credit proposal. So the email chain is in response to the letter that we were just talking about under S-40, I think?
S-40, which was...
Yes, S-40.
Okay.
So it was Patrick Mulaney's letter and in the email chain on Thursday, March 15th at 4:37, Keith wrote to Patrick saying, "My read of this letter is that IHIFC does not want to enter into a conversation with the city about impact fees. If I have misunderstood, please let me know." So the next day, Patrick wrote back to Keith and said, "I do think that you misunderstand IHIFC's position. IHIFC has always been willing to discuss the development agreement mitigation and remains willing to do so." There's more there, but I don't know that I need to read it in unless you want me to.
No, that, thank you, that's okay. And so was Shelter willing to discuss mitigation with the city?
Yes.
Had Shelter been trying to discuss mitigation with the city?
Yes, I mean, throughout all of our conversations with the city, throughout the process of the replacement regulations being considered and throughout the process of our applications being submitted, we always had been open to discussion and in fact asking for discussion. But typically what was happening was Keith would ask us or specifically to have us to have Patrick write something, which then Keith would say he was sending to the city attorney, and we would get no response. No response from Keith or no response from the city attorney. And even when Patrick would call the city attorney, he often wouldn't get calls back or wouldn't get response at all. So, you know, there are several letters that are in the record that you've seen that we provided per, as requested, and there just wasn't any response on the city's side.
So this email also makes reference to, it says, "In IHIFC's view, mitigation is intertwined with vesting and both issues are raised in the notice of default." If we look at S-41, is this the notice of default that that email was referring to?
Yes.
And what's your understanding of why this was provided? What's the purpose of this?
The notice of default was a formal notice to the city of all of the ways that they were in default of the development agreement. It also had, the development agreement also has a provision that if you deliver a notice of default, you're supposed to meet within a set number of days. I think it might be seven.
Did you end up meeting with the city?
We did.
So let's turn, let's turn to that meeting and talk about it. And we'll come back to another issue in a moment. So do you recall, and you're welcome to look at your meeting minutes if you need to to refresh your memory, but do you recall when that default meeting happened?
I believe that it happened on March 21st, 2018, although these notes say 19, but it's 18.
And just for a matter of the record, Zach, I wanted to make sure you have a copy of the meeting minutes for this meeting, that's correct? Okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure. Okay, so let's talk about what happened in this meeting. Who were the people that attended it?
So this meeting, it was Gary Young, me, Patrick Mulaney, Pat Schneider, Zach Lell, Keith Niven, and Lucy Sloman.
And so you mentioned a minute ago that this was arising out of that March 5th letter. So what was, I mean, we know that it was a notice of default and this was coming out of that, but what were the topics in general that you were talking about at this meeting?
Well, I mean, we were going through the defaults that we had specified in the, in the letter. Mr. Niven explained that rather than write a response, that he wanted to talk through the defaults.
Were you here to listen to Patrick Mulaney's testimony about this meeting?
I was.
Do you agree with his characterization of what happened in the meeting?
I do.
Do you recall how city staff reacted at this meeting to the issues that were being raised in the discussion?
Yes, Mr. Niven seemed upset at having to be present at the meeting from the outset and made that clear in his communications with us and with our attorney. So we, it was, it was a little bit contentious from, from the very beginning, but we attempted to walk through the notice of default.
I'm looking on the, the second page here of the meeting minutes. It's one, two, three, four, five bullet points down. After you've had a chance to review, can you, can you tell us about Mr. Niven's reaction in this meeting?
Yeah, so at some point, partway through the meeting, Mr. Niven stated that he needed to leave by 2:45 for another meeting across town, so he suggested that Mr. Schneider should manage his time more efficiently. At that point, Mr. Niven was really kind of agitated and, and getting angry.
If you go further down the page there and look at, let's see, it's one, two, 10 bullet points down. What did Mr. Niven have to say about the timelines under the development agreement?
Well, he said he wasn't prepared to answer questions about the timelines because he didn't know them, because he didn't, he didn't feel like that was his job, but that maybe Lucy might know the timelines.
And then if you could further down there, what did Ms. Sloman have to say about the timelines under the development agreement?
She acknowledged that the timelines were exceeded.
So after that meeting, was it, what was your impression in terms of at least one of the defaults that was being alleged in terms of the timing and exceeding the time requirements under the development agreement?
Sorry, can you say that again?
So after that, so Ms. Sloman, you just explained, had said that the timeline was exceeded. Was that one of the defaults that was alleged in your default letter from March 5th, that the city wasn't following the timelines of the development agreement?
Yes, that was one of the defaults. And so after she acknowledged that that, that timeframe had been exceeded, Mr. Schneider asked if we could all agree that there was at least one default. And then he pointed out that the development agreement states that if there are defaults, that the defaulting party has 30 days to cure.
To cure the default in 30 days?
No, they did not. They still, our plat is still in process.
So then on the next page, about seven, seven bullet points down, this conversation, it appears from the notes, continued to progress. What was Mr. Niven's reaction as the meeting went on?
As I stated before, he was, he was agitated and upset at having to be there. He kept saying things like he didn't understand or he didn't know or it wasn't his job. And at one point, he told us that the city can respond by April 4th, but all the letter was going to say is that he didn't understand and so there wasn't really going to be any substance to the response. And then Mr. Schneider said, pointed out that it was clear that he really hadn't, that Mr. Niven hadn't really read the notice of default carefully and, and hadn't given it adequate focus. So rather than having him read it out loud, he wanted to move to the agenda items that we had provided at the outset. So Mr. Schneider had provided an agenda at the beginning of the meeting. At that point, Keith got really angry and started packing up his stuff and was attempting to leave the meeting, saying it wasn't a good use, he didn't know if it was a good use of, of our time and that his plan was just to write back to us in 30 days, saying that he needed more information and he wanted to leave at that point. Mr. Schneider pointed out to Mr. Niven that according to what he had told us earlier in the meeting, he still had 20 minutes left before he needed to leave to get to his meeting and asked that he please sit back down so that we could continue to go through the agenda items and the city could explain their position as we went on. And Mr. Niven did, did end up sitting back down and staying.
If you look to the very last page of your notes, I'm looking at a bullet point that's one, two, three, four, up from the bottom. What did Mr. Niven have to say about the vested status of the plat?
He confirmed that the plat is vested and will be reviewed based on the standards in the development agreement. And so then Patrick Mulaney pointed out that the development agreement defines development standards, capitalized term, as including mitigation. And so he asked for confirmation that what they're saying was that we vest through the plat to the mitigation. And Mr. Niven said that they would need to get back to us on that.
Have they gotten back to you on that?
Sort of. There, there is a letter from April 4th that Mr. Niven wrote back in response to this meeting. Before we, before that meeting ended, I guess Patrick Mulaney kept asking some questions about vesting and if the city's position was that even if we had a complete application, the replacement regulations could retroactively unvest our applications. Keith, again, was sort of agitated at the time and so he said something to the effect of, "You want my opinion on that? I'll give you my opinion." It's, and then Mr. Lell cut him off and said, "No, we'll get back to you on that." And that was kind of how the, the meeting ended. Mr. Schneider said that it would be helpful if we had their official position because we don't have any clear answers and that they are $30 million plus questions and the clock was ticking.
So you mentioned that the city responded, at least in part, with a letter from dated April 4th, 2018. Can you turn to exhibit S-30, please?
At that point, Keith got really angry and started packing up his stuff and was attempting to leave the meeting, saying it wasn't a good use, he didn't know if it was a good use of, of our time, and that his plan was just to write back to us in 30 days, saying that he needed more information, and he wanted to leave at that point. Mr. Schneider pointed out to Mr. Niven that according to what he had told us earlier in the meeting, he still had 20 minutes left before he needed to leave to get to his meeting, and asked that he please sit back down so that we could continue to go through the agenda items, and the city could explain their position as we went on. And Mr. Niven did, did end up sitting back down and staying.
If you look to the, the very last page of your notes, I'm looking at a bullet point that's one, two, three, four, up from the bottom. What did Mr. Niven have to say about the vested status of the plat?
He confirmed that the plat is vested and will be reviewed based on the standards in the development agreement. And so then Patrick Malaney pointed out that the development agreement defines development standards, capitalized term, as including mitigation, and so he asked for confirmation that what they're saying was that we vest through the plat to the mitigation. And Mr. Niven said that they would need to get back to us on that.
Have they gotten back to you on that?
Sort of. There, there is a letter from April 4th that Mr. Niven wrote back in response to this Before we, before that meeting ended, I guess Patrick Malaney kept asking some questions about vesting and if the city's position was that even if we had a complete application, the replacement regulations could retroactively unvest our applications. Keith, again, was sort of agitated at the time, and so he said something to the effect of, "You want my opinion on that? I'll give you my opinion." It's, and then Mr. Lell cut him off and said, "No, we'll get back to you on that." And that was kind of how the, the meeting ended. Mr. Schneider said that it would be helpful if we had their official position, because we don't have any clear answers, and that they are $30 million plus questions, and the clock was ticking.
So you mentioned that the city responded, at least in part, with a letter from dated April 4th, 2018. Is the letter at S30, is that the letter that you were just referring to?
It is.
So what did the city have to say in this letter? And I know it's, it's a lengthy letter, so we don't have to go through every aspect of it, but let's talk first about the plat application issue. Do you recall what the city had to say about the plat in this letter?
I believe they acknowledged that it was vested.
I think to, to help you find it, I'm looking at page 5. There's a section that runs onto that page, and let me know if that's what you're thinking about.
This is what I was thinking about. So it, it says in part on, actually, the top of page 5, there's a sentence that reads, "Where a plat application actually identifies a specific development plan or concept such as building footprints, setbacks, et cetera, what is vested is what is sought in the application for a plat." And that's a quote from Noble Manor. "Based on this, our plat application vests us to both the building footprints of the SDPs, which are shown on our plat application, as well as the parking is also shown, a parking layout is also shown on the plat application, and the, the development plan or concept is shown in the form of the table that allocates the allowable development under the development agreement across the blocks." So when I read that portion of this letter, I thought, well, that portion is correct. They somehow come to different conclusions. I actually suspected that this, when the city responded to this and wrote this, that maybe the people that wrote this letter weren't aware that the building footprints and allowable development were shown on the plat. Because I think it really, I mean, it states what the law is, and, and our, our plat complies with that. And given those two things, there's no reason why we should be here in this hearing, because we were vested and are vested to the development agreement, the development standards under the development agreement, which would give jurisdiction over our SDP applications to the UVDC, not the Development Commission, and to the, and the ASDPs should be administrative decisions that are made by the administrative staff.
So a minute ago, you were mentioning the, what the plat shows. We have a, a figure of the plat that's already in the record, but we noticed that maybe because the shading is very light, that some of the features aren't showing up. So we wanted to introduce another exhibit, which is going to be S78. This is just a higher resolution image of the plat, so that's a little bit easier to see.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
Ms. Carey, when you said that it is a redefined or clarified version of the plat, are you referring to the plat that was contained in the?
August 2017 submittal or the December 15th, 2017 supplement?
The, the December that was included with the notice of, or notice of application.
Thank you.
So that's, here's one for record. I think I have an extra here for me, Pat. And Tia, if you could take a look at it and just confirm, you know, what I just explained, that this is, is what I said it is.
Yes. This is a sheet out of our plat application materials, and it's just a better printout of what was actually submitted.
Okay. And what were some of the, the features that you were concerned may not be showing up on the lower resolution images of this?
I think specifically the parking was hard to see in the smaller and, and lower resolution version that was previously included as an exhibit.
And if you look down at the bottom here, and it's, it's almost in the middle of the page, what's the date of this document?
12/14/2017.
Okay, so that's referencing back to that December submittal that we were just talking about?
Yeah, and again, the way that Mr. Lell refers to it infers that there are two applications. There are not two applications. There is one single application for one single plat, and never before this hearing has the city ever alleged that there were two applications, or that somehow this was not part of our application.
So before we get too far along in the timeline, I wanted to go back to a new exhibit, which Will you please describe what the document is at S79?
Yes, this is a letter that I wrote to the Isidora City Council on March 16th, 2018.
Why did you write that letter?
We wanted to make sure that the city council was aware of what was going on with the staff and the review of our applications, and that there were some serious defaults under the development agreement. And that if they proceeded in the way that the administration was recommending, that there, we would have no choice but to pursue legal action. That was not what we wanted to do. It's not in anybody's best interest, but it was the only avenue that, that staff and the administration were leaving us with.
And turning back to the April 4th letter that we were just talking about, so that's back at S30. What did Shelter do after receiving this letter? What next steps did it take with respect to the letter and what it says?
We, because what this letter said was that they were deeming our SDP applications to not be vested any longer to the development standards enacted by the development agreement, we appealed this determination to the hearing examiner. The city argued at the hearing examiner that it wasn't a final determination, that they were going to make that final determination later, and that we were premature in our appeal.
Let's take a look at exhibit S2, please.
Okay.
What is this document at S2?
It is a declaration of Mr. Niven, signed May 31st, 2018.
And what did Mr. Niven tell the hearing examiner? Well, and actually, to back up, was this submitted to the hearing examiner that you just referenced?
Yes, it was.
What did Mr. Niven tell the hearing examiner about when a final decision would be issued?
In number eight of his declaration, he stated that each of these applications, which he's referring to the SDP applications and ASDP applications, is currently under active administrative review and is being processed by the city. The city has not yet issued a final decision approving, denying, or conditioning any of the requested permits. Although not certain, I anticipate that a final decision on IHIFC's SDP and ASDP applications will be issued in June or July 2018, and that a decision on IHIFC's preliminary plat will be issued in August or September of 2018.
Did any of those things happen?
No, they did not.
And what was the date of this declaration?
So this was from May 31st, 2018.
So May 31st, 2018, and then he's anticipating June or July 2018. Is it your understanding that it would be even possible for the applications to be heard and decided in front of something like the Development Commission in that timeframe?
I don't, I don't believe so, since they would have had to be noticed and staff reports would have had to be written, and they really hadn't done any review on the applications at that point, nor are we aware of any review being done until much later in, in August and September of 2018.
Did you review this declaration when you received it around, around this time of May 31st?
Yes.
What was your understanding when you reviewed it of what would happen with the applications?
My understanding was that the city administratively was going to issue a decision on the applications, saying that they had determined that they were not vested to the development standards in the development agreement, and instead would be considered under the replacement regulations and were therefore being denied. I thought those decisions would be issued administratively. There was another communication from Ms. Sloman around this time. We got, I believe it was on May 25th of 2018, we got a letter on each of our applications stating that the city was going to apply the replacement regulations, and asking us to either revise our applications so that they complied with the replacement regulations, or let them know in writing that we would not be doing that, because we didn't agree, in which case they would expeditiously issue a decision on the applications. So never in that communication, nor in this communication, did they say anything about Development Commission. There were also additional conversations that were happening and communications that were happening between the city's attorney and our attorneys. No one communicated that we would go to Development Commission until much, much later.
So let's, going back to what you said just a minute ago, these May 25th letters, let's talk about those for a minute. So those would be new exhibits, which we should be at S79. S80, okay.
S80 is the next exhibit.
No, you're correct. That's right, because that March 16th letter is S79. Thank you. So S80, and there's three of these letters. Here's the first one. This is not the same thing.
So S80 is the medical office one.
Yeah. Okay, so they've left us shy of one, but. This one we have the correct number of, so there you go. So, Tia, can you describe what the letters are at S80, S81, and S82, please?
Yes. S80 is regarding the medical office building. S81 is regarding the retail, and S82 is regarding the storage facility. All of these letters are the letters that I just described. They're dated May 25th, 2018. And they acknowledge that our administrative site development permit or site development permit application was deemed complete. But then, they say that following termination of the agreement and the city council's adoption of replacement regulations, the project site is therefore, is thereafter governed by the replacement regulations, rather than the standards set forth in the agreement. And then they ask us to review, well, it asks, it says, "Please notify me if any changes are necessary to comply with the newly effective regulations, which you may view here," and they provide a link. "If your position is that the replacement regulations are not applicable to your permit application, and you decline to perform the review and make the modifications referenced above, please confirm your intent to this effect in writing at your earliest convenience. In that event, the city will proceed expeditiously to issue a final decision on your permit based upon the application's compliance or noncompliance with the replacement regulations." This request to make our, make revisions to comply with the replacement regulations seemed a little bit disingenuous to us, given that the replacement regulations were, portions of them were developed to prohibit the exact type of development that we were proposing, specifically on the retail application, and that everyone already knew that the, none of these three applications complied with the, with the replacement regulations. So we received this letter on May 25th, which I think was either the Thursday or the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, and we responded back to them, I think, by the 31st, so only a couple business days later. And then, nothing. We didn't get any expeditious decision. We didn't get anything until much later. Well, I guess there were conversations happening between the attorneys, like I had said before, where we were under the impression that the, the decisions were coming administratively. And at one, at some point in August, I believe, we were informed that the city had changed its position once again, and had now decided that we should go to Development Commission to determine if there, if the applications complied with the replacement regulations.
So, so a minute ago, you So a minute ago, you mentioned that you responded a couple days later to those letters. There's a new exhibit at S-83. Is this the letter that you were referencing?
I think this is part of the response, because I think there was also, there was a letter from me as well as a letter from Foster Pepper, I believe. So this is, yes, part of the response.
If you take a look at S-17 in the record, I'll give you a minute to get it in front of you, but if you can tell me if S-17 is the other part of that response that you're referencing?
Yes, it is.
And then you made reference a minute ago to conversations between the attorneys about the the process that was being applied. This will be S-84. Can you describe what the document is at S-84, please?
Yes, this is a letter from Pat Schneider to Zach Lell, following up on a conversation that they had had on August 2, in which Mr. Lell had explained that the city had changed its position and now intended to process our applications for SDPs and ASDPs by means of the process in the replacement regulations, which meant it was going to Development Commission. The letter goes on to explain why that should not be happening, but that's where we are.
So just, again, being conscious of time, I've got another topic that is fairly short, I think, to get through, so I'm going to try to get through that and then pause for a break again if you would like to. I think it would take about 10 to 15 minutes, but I just wanted to let you know.
Let's do that.
So this next exhibit will be S-85. Tia, will you please describe the document at S-85?
So this is a continued email chain regarding our preliminary plat application and processing. The email at the very top is from Lucy Sloman to me on Friday, December 21, 2018.
Okay, and there's some attachments to that. And I want to provide one of those attachments. This would be S-86. If you could just confirm for me that this is, in fact, one of the attachments?
Yes, so S-86 was attached to the December 21, 2018 email from Ms. Sloman to me. And this is a collated responses back and forth on questions related to our plat. And it's a document that Ms. Sloman put together based on correspondence that the city received or sent to us related to the plat.
And so have you, has Shelter responded to the most recent comments? I guess this would be from December 21, 2018?
Yes, so we resubmitted our plat application today to the city. This email chain, if you look back, it starts back in April of 2018. And it's taken from April of 2018 until December 21, 2018, for us to get straight answers out of the staff as to what regulations apply to our plat. And when I say what regulations, I don't, maybe regulations isn't the right word. Standards, like specifically things like road standards, trail standards, the things that you really need to know in order to put together an application for a plat. We were getting changing direction, inconsistent comments, and so... and just a lot of nonresponsiveness. So I think we've already gone through some of the timeframes in here where there are long pauses where we, you know, ask for information in April and we get a response at the end of August. So big gaps in communication. And finally, on December 21, they sent back enough information that we could revise our plat. So we've been working from then until now to revise and resubmit the plat application. So it's back into the city now.
Okay. And I have copies of that. They're already in order, so if I can have just a second to add them. But this will be S-87, and then we'll go through the subparts, which are subparts A through, I believe it's F, or, yeah, A through F. I'm going to hand you these, just to make sure that they're the same ones in each of these packets in order. So it'll be, there you go. All right. That's the complete marked one. These two are in the same order, but not marked yet. Okay, so if you could walk us through the subparts of Exhibit S-87B's, beginning with A?
So S-87A is a preliminary stormwater report. S-87B is the main plat package that has some of the preliminary engineering and the layout. That's sort of the meat of the plat itself. S-87... Oh, this is C. S-87C is a chart that responds to the comments that were provided by the city as a markup of the preliminary plat application itself. So those were from March 16, 2018. And then there is a memo from Transpo Group that's S-87D that responds to the transportation-related questions. Then S-87E is a supplemental project narrative. And S-8-
Excuse me, would you, what was the supplemental project narrative?
It would have been S-87E.
I don't think we, I have a copy of the D.
I see, okay. I think they're in here.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So S-87E was the supplemental project narrative. And S-87F is another set of responses to city comments. So part of what happened was we got comments as a markup of the plat itself in March of 2018. Then we met with the city on that, on those comments at the end of March. And then in April, they provided us with additional comments that weren't entirely consistent, and in some cases outright conflicted, with information that had been provided either at our pre-application or in the comments from March. So that's why there's two different sets of comment responses.
So why has it taken until today for Shelter to be able to submit these materials for the plat?
You mean from December 21 till today, or what do you mean?
Well, so what was significant about December? The December 21 communication versus everything else that was going on for months in terms of being able to submit these materials?
Well, it wasn't until the December communication that we had enough information and clarification of which standards applied. So we had conflicting statements from the city about what was the applicable standard to apply or what information was required. And so the questions and clarifications that we had requested and started requesting back in April, well, March and April of 2018, it wasn't until December of 2018 that we got enough information to actually revise and resubmit. I think when Ms. Sloman testified, she characterized it as, you know, us asking an unusual number of questions or somehow being unreasonable in the information that we were requesting. But it was really information that without which we couldn't revise and resubmit our application appropriately. And quite frankly, it was, some of it was information without which they would not be able to review our application. So the best example of that would be our request for all of the AMMs that would apply to the road standards for our project. If there are modifications to the standards, we had no way of knowing that unless the city provided those. And that took, I think that was cited in part as one of the things that took so long for them to research. And that was after they had already completed one review of our plat in March, so I'm not sure what they reviewed it against.
Do you recall, were you present for Mr. Niven's testimony at our October 24 hearing in front of the Development Commission?
Yes.
Do you recall Mr. Niven testifying that he hadn't had time to discuss with staff what vested through the plat?
Yes. And I thought that was in direct conflict with everything, I mean, with the very premise of being here. Because the argument that we have been making and have made to the city throughout is that the plat vested us, invested the SDP applications. So if the city made the determination that the SDP applications were not vested to the development standards enacted through the development agreement, then they had to have already determined that those SDP applications didn't vest through the plat. So they had to have considered what did vest through the plat just by virtue of sending us here. So that was one part of it. The other part of it was, the April 4 letter is their response, where they attempt to respond to that. And I think later in his testimony, he refers to the April 4 letter as where he had answered the question for us as to what vested through the plat. So I don't know how he would have written the April 4 letter explaining what was vested through the plat and not having had the opportunity to discuss with his staff and the city attorney. So I found his testimony very inconsistent with what I knew to be true.
Do you also recall hearing Director Niven testify that, and I'm summarizing, that he made the decision to send your Shelter's applications to the Development Commission back in March of 2018?
Yes.
Is that consistent with your understanding of what he was telling Shelter and the hearing examiner?
No, because we didn't, like I said, we didn't ever hear anything of Development Commission until August of 2018. And his declaration to the hearing examiner on May 31 referenced that he believed the decision was going to happen in June or July. If he believed that, then... And if he believed that and he believed that the applications were coming to Development Commission, then one would think he would have taken some step to actually get the applications to Development Commission in June or July. But he didn't do that. And looking back at the calendar for the Development Commission, there's a big gap where you guys didn't have to meet on anything in most of June, July, and August. So I find it hard to believe that he could have both made that decision in March and also at the end of May believed that he was going to get the applications through Development Commission and comply with all of the notice requirements and staff reports and everything in June or July. And you add to that the fact that the city attorneys were not aware that that was his plan until August, when they informed our attorneys that the position had changed.
I think we're ready to take a break there.
Let's come back in 10 minutes. Okay, I think we're back on the air, so it would be a good time to resume.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to start by introducing a new exhibit, S-88. Put it up on the screen here as well for you. Excuse me. Okay. So S-88 is a demonstrative that we're going to use as we walk through some other exhibits and testimony from Tia. So starting with this, Tia, I wanted to talk with you a little bit about some other projects that are going on in the Issaquah Highlands. And the first one that I want to talk about is this Issaquah Highlands Block 19 multifamily application. And there's, we have the notice of application for that, which we'll add as Exhibit S-89. If you could take a look at this and just confirm that that's actually what it is for the record, please.
Yes, this is a notice of application for Block 19 multifamily. It's a five-story apartment building.
Okay. And then S-90 is the next exhibit. And can you describe what that document is, please?
S-90 is a notice of decision, and it's an administrative site development permit for Block 19. It's dated October 13, 2017.
Okay. So can you walk us through the, the timeline there then at S-88? And just confirm with these documents that the times on that timeline are, or the dates on that timeline are accurate?
Yes. So if you look at the notice of application, which is S-89, it notes that the application date is April 21, 2017. The application complete date is May 24, 2017. And then the notice of decision date is October 13, 2017. So you can see the timeframes for review were vastly different for this application than for our applications. Despite the fact that it looks like these applications came in and were processed in a time when the city has said they had shortage of staff. So for this ASDP, the application came in within just over a month. It was deemed complete. And it was approved less than six months later.
How long has Shelter been waiting on its applications?
Well, it, it varies. But we, we started the plat process with conversations with the city back in early 2017. So we're two years in on the plat. And the SDP applications, we started conversations and early meetings with the city in September and October of 2017. So we're now in 2019.
If you could turn to the next page in S-88, please. What's the City Surf project? What's your understanding of what that is?
So the City Surf project is a proposed indoor wave, deepwater surfing facility that also has, I think, restaurant space and maybe a little bit of additional retail. So they have a site, administrative site development permit.
And I think this next exhibit would be S-90, so S-91. What, what's the document at S-91?
So this is the notice of application for the City Surf project. And it has an application date of May 23, 2017. An application completeness date of June 7, 2017. And then the exhibit shows that the application was approved on October 10, 2017.
And then S-92 is going to be the next document. What's the document at S-92?
S-92 is part of an email chain between Lucy Sloman and John Haas. And it looks like Keith Niven is included on this as well. And Jennifer R. Woods, Valerie Porter, and Christopher Wright, who are all city planning staff, are copied on it.
What's this conversation about encouraging, encouraging him to pursue a building permit?
So Ms. Sloman wrote to John Haas. And she says, "I don't know when you were planning to submit your building permit, but I suggest you do it somewhat soon. The reason is that with the end of the DA, we are working to determine which permits are vested under the DA and which aren't. State law establishes certain permits as vesting permits, and building permits, if they are deemed complete, are one of them. The land use permit you received is not one identified in state law. Staff has proposed to council that land use permits such as yours be vested, but we don't know what council's decision will be. The safest route to ensure your land use permit is vested is to have a complete building permit prior to the new code going into effect." And this was on October 16, 2017.
Is what Ms. Sloman was saying in this email, is that accurate?
Well, I mean, the part about council getting to decide, or staff getting to decide what, whether a permit remains vested or not, is not accurate. It's not consistent with Washington law.
So what's this push for a building permit for Mr. Haas's application?
I don't know why they were wanting to do that, except for that, I guess, they wanted to make sure that the council couldn't undo, undo vesting of his project. And I guess Ms. Sloman felt like building permit was the only thing that was going to accomplish that.
Did Ms. Sloman or anyone else at the city reach out to Shelter to try to get Shelter to vest via building permit?
No, they never reached out to us and suggested a building permit or suggested any extra means of ensuring that our vesting was continued to be recognized.
So let's look at a new exhibit, S-93. What's the exhibit at S-93?
S-93 is an email from Lucy Sloman to Crystal Colkey, Christopher Wright, and John Haas on November 14, 2017 regarding City Surf building permit pre-submital.
So she's saying there in this email, they, and I'm inferring that that's referring back to City Surf, are racing to submit a complete building permit so that they will be vested under the IH Development Agreement, which likely means by the end of this year. What's your take on that statement?
Well, at this point in time, in November of 2017, staff was really pushing for replacement regulations to be adopted on December 4 of 2017. And so I think this is city staff trying to help or encourage Mr. Haas to get a building permit application, complete application in, so that they could be sure that his project remained vested.
So I guess I'm confused by this because did he have, is it your understanding that he had a land use permit issued?
Yeah, in October of 2017, he had an administrative site development permit issued for his project under the Development Agreement, where the development standards enacted by the Development Agreement are very specific, that implementing approvals vest and site development permit is an implementing approval. So I don't know why they were doing this. But they were advising Mr. Haas that he should get a building permit application in in order to maintain his vested status, which he clearly already had.
Okay, let's turn now to S-94, a new exhibit. What's the document at S-94?
S-94 is a continuation of that email chain that we saw in S-93. So at the end of the November 14, 2017 email, Ms. Sloman asks a question, and she says, "What I didn't know is what the threshold is for pre-submital permit. In other words, does John need one before he submits his BLD?", which BLD is referencing the building permit. Christopher Wright responds and says, "Yes, they should do a pre-submital meeting, especially given the vesting situation. The direction I've given is to request the meeting when their plans and submittals are at about 90%." And then Ms. Sloman responds to Christopher and says, "In light of the times, can you give John..." "In light of the tight times, can you give John some guidance on timing since you're saying he needs to do this, Lucy?" So, again, she, Ms. Sloman, is attempting to help Mr. Haas make sure that the city continues to recognize his vested status. And her opinion is that this should be accomplished by getting a complete building permit application in. And all of this is at the same time that we're experiencing the exact opposite from city staff. You know, we're having our SDP and ASDP applications repeatedly rejected for completeness, which would clearly vest them under the Development Agreement, since SDPs are implementing approvals.
So let's take a look at S-95, new exhibit. What is S-95?
S-95 is an email from Ms. Sloman to Mary Lou Polly, Emily Moon, and Keith Niven. Since this was in January of 2018, Mayor Polly had just recently taken office. And Ms. Sloman references that Keith had driven around Mayor Polly, and they had talked about Isaguas Highlands Blocks 19 and 20, but she wasn't sure that Keith had the most up-to-date information, so she was providing some additional information. With respect to Block 20 City Surf, she states, "They have an approved ASDP and have said they are ready to submit for construction permits. This week, the owner and I have exchanged emails and plan to talk this morning. I'm hoping he can submit his building permit ASAP, since I've told him about the imminent adoption of replacement regulations. Submital of a building permit which is deemed complete would vest him under state law."
So what was the date of this email?
January 26, 2018.
And how was the city treating Shelter with respect to... How was Shelter being treated with respect to this building permit conversation that the city was having with John Haas? Were you having the same conversation, something different?
No, no one was reaching out to us, trying to help us vest under any scenario. It was never suggested to us that we submit a building permit application. I think that's in part because the city staff was also of the opinion that they would not accept a building permit application from us, because they required site development permit application as a precondition to building permit application. So they did not believe that was an option to vest us, plus they didn't want to vest our projects around this same time. So we're... This email is on January 26, 2018. The email announcing the change in the administration's recommendation came out on February 2, so just a few days after this. So this is the behind-the-scenes, what was happening to ensure that everyone else who had applications potentially in Isaguas Highlands had a path to being recognized as vested. As soon as that was accomplished, we... The city adopted the replacement regulations and decided that we were the only property owner with pending applications that were not going to be acknowledged as vested to the development standards enacted by the Development Regulations.
Let's take a look at S-96. This is a new exhibit. What is this document at S-96?
This was a follow-up to the S-95, continuation of that email chain. So Mayor Polly had responded, "Excellent update, thank you," on Friday evening. And then on Saturday, January 27, Ms. Sloman wrote back and said, "I am concerned. John Haas, the developer of City Surf Block 20, and I have exchanged a number of emails this week. I've called him two to three times, but he will not return my call. His emails have focused on the city's right to not vest his land use permit rather than when he will submit a building permit or the status of his project, even though I specifically asked those questions."
So at this time, had you talked with John Haas at all about his situation?
Yes, we had been in contact with Mr. Haas throughout the process. I don't remember exactly when we started talking to him.
Do you know what Ms. Sloman's referenced when she says, "His emails have focused on the city's right to not vest his land use permit"? Do you know what that's referring to?
Yes, John was adamant that the city could not divest his project, particularly where he had an issued site development permit which clearly vested under the Development Agreement. So he was telling the city that, that he did not feel the need to spend resources on developing building permit application materials when he had a vested permit. And he adamantly believed, and I believe correctly, that his permit was vested, and he didn't need to do that. You know, the city... He told us that the city offered to relax building permit submittal requirements for him if he would just get his building permit in.
Did the city make any sort of reference to you or to your knowledge, to Mr. Haas, about why they were taking this position that a building permit would... Or I'm sorry, a land use permit would be divested?
I'm not sure.
Do you recall that there was ever a reason given for this shift to this concept of retroactive divesting?
I mean, I think it was always described to us, and as far as I know, to Mr. Haas, that it was a change in administration and that the new mayor had changed the recommendation, and she didn't want to acknowledge vesting for those projects.
So let's look at a new exhibit, S-97. What's the document at S-97?
It is an email chain. And if you go all the way to the back of it, it starts with the February 2 email that I referenced, which was when they announced the change in position with respect to vesting. So it says, "There are several items to note. Number one, the vesting language has been changed to match state law rather than the previous broader vesting language. As this is an administration decision, the mayor has offered to discuss this change with concerned parties."
And so following up to that email, it looks like John had forwarded that on to some people.
I think he replied "all." Where are we? Yeah, so that was actually not him. He didn't forward it to those people. That was a reply "all." Those were the people that were initially copied on it by the city clerk. And so he responded back to the city clerk, saying, "There is a contention of stakeholders on this list who have ASDPs and other permits that would like to speak with the mayor regarding the administrative decision to drop the proposed vesting language. How would you suggest we facilitate the meeting? And should we do so as a group or on a property-by-property basis?"
So then there's another email here from Tisha Geiser to Lucy Sloman. What does that one say?
So she... Tisha says, "Hi Lucy, I'm hoping you can address John's question." And then Lucy responds back, "This is up to Emily and Mary Lou. Keith has already sent it to Emily on Friday. I haven't seen anything about how they want to handle it." And then on Tuesday, Tisha asks again for an update on a response for John. And then Keith responds, saying that he thinks what he remembered Emily saying was that MLP or Mary Lou Polly should take the lead on this with staff providing backup. I think Joanne could schedule a meeting with MLP and John. Lucy or I should be included as staff support.
So at this time, was the city attempting to go through the same process that's being described with John Haas in terms of meeting with the mayor and moving that along for Shelter?
Not exactly. So we received the same email on the second, and we also requested a meeting with the mayor right away in response to this email indicating that the decision to change the vesting language was her decision. So we got a meeting with the mayor and with Keith separately from this. And I believe John also got a meeting with the mayor and I don't know if it was Keith or Lucy, or maybe both, separately. But our meeting was not ever... No discussion was ever about helping us to vest. It was the opposite. And the other thing that's not in these emails is that the city informed Mr. Haas that they were changing the administration's recommendation before they ever told us or before they ever released it publicly.
So let's look at another exhibit, S-98. Can you describe what's at S-98, please?
This... S-98 appears to be a meeting notice, an electronic meeting notice, for a meeting that was organized by Lucy Sloman regarding the City Surf phased permits. So this was on March 7, 2018.
How did the city, based on this email or meeting invite, how did the city feel about Mr. Haas's project?
Hang on just a second, let me read through this. So I think what this is, is the text that is actually below the header of the meeting request, is an email cut and pasted that John Haas sent to the city, following up on the meeting that they had had in response to his request that was in the previous email string that we were looking at under S-97.
Got it.
So he describes that he's proceeding... So, he describes that he's proceeding full speed ahead on two parallel courses and wants to get feedback, their feedback. First, that he was planning to proceed with the deferred building permit submittal package within the timeframe we discussed for the City Surf facility. And second, we're seeking a temporary structure permit for a pop-up. So...
So, this, from this, is it, what's a, do you understand what the deferred building permit submittal package would be?
Based on conversations with John after he met with the mayor and staff, my understanding is he's referring to what they had offered him, which was to relax the building permit submittal requirements, so let him do some sort of lesser-than-normal building permit submittal in order to check the box of building permit submittal and recognize his project as vested. So, my understanding is that's what he's referring to in this text.
Has the city relaxed any standards in the processes that it was requiring shelter to go through on its permit applications?
No, quite the opposite, as you saw from our SDP insufficiency letters.
What's this document at S-99?
S-99 appears to be a draft of a letter that the city ultimately sent to John Haas and City Surf acknowledging that their ASDP application was, in fact, vested to the development standards in the development agreement as Mr. Haas had been contending all along.
So what were, in this draft at least, what were they relying on in terms of saying that he would be vested? What was the rationale for that that they're providing?
They refer to the three-year boilerplate effective term reference that was in the ASDP document itself, together with the underlying provisions of the development agreement as the basis for recognizing the vesting.
And then, let's look at exhibit S-100. What's the document at S-100?
S-100 is the actual final letter that was issued to Mr. Haas and City Surf regarding vesting of his ASDP permit.
Does the development agreement make any distinction on, based on your understanding, between a complete application and a permit like John Haas has?
No, it doesn't. Not for purposes of vesting.
Does it, do you know of anything in the development agreement that says something about a three-year term of a permit governing vesting?
No, there's nothing like that in the development agreement.
Going back to exhibit S-88, that figure of the different timelines, let's move on to the next page in that. So it should be the page for Westridge North Single Family Polygon Application.
Okay.
And this will be, the next exhibit will be S-101. And can you describe for us what that exhibit is?
This is the combined notice of application that the city issued for three projects, the Westridge North Single Family Platte, the High Street Collection Preliminary Platte, and the Westridge Townhomes North Site Development Permit.
So when was the Westridge North Single Family application, when was that submitted?
July 14th, 2017.
When did the city deem it complete?
July 24th, 2017.
So, what's, how many days did that take them?
10 days, as per the development agreement. That's what Appendix L of the Development Agreement requires.
So you mentioned a minute ago that this was combined with the High Street, so there was, so the notice of application for High Street, did it go out at the same time as this one?
It did. These three applications that are part of this S-101, they, all the notices came out together as one combined notice. It's posted that way in the city's system of active permits as well.
So then, the next exhibit, S-102. What's this document at S-102?
S-102 is a briefing response memo for Westridge North Single Family Platte. And it's dated April 10th, 2018.
Okay. And what is that document? What is that, just kind of as a summary, what does it do?
So, the briefing response memo would respond to public comments and questions and issues that had come up with respect to the Platte application. And it's the staff response, although I think also the staff allows the applicant to help with the response.
So then, this next exhibit would be S-103. Can you describe what the document is at S-103, please?
S-103 is a notice of decision for the Westridge North Townhomes One Site Development Permit.
Okay.
S-104 is the notice of action by Izzaquah City Council for the Westridge North Preliminary Platte. So, it says that the date of action was July 16th, 2018. So that was for the Westridge North Preliminary Platte. So that was the one that the application had come in about a year previous on July 14th, 2017.
So is that the same thing as the Westridge North Single Family application that's shown on, I think this would be the third page of this?
Yes.
Okay, figured that we're looking at. So you said it's taken about a year, or it took about a year for that Platte?
From Platte application to approval. And I think it's worth noting that that was a particularly complicated Platte because it involved closing a street that is part of Izzaquah Highlands and is going to be converted into a trail. So it had a particularly contentious issue attached to it and was therefore much more complex than our Platte application, and more complex than an average Platte.
And then, let's flip then to the next page in this figure. So we're looking at the Westridge Townhomes One South in exhibit S-88. And this would be exhibit S-105. I'm going to hand to you here. What's exhibit S-105?
S-105 is the notice of application for the Westridge Townhomes One Site Development Permit.
And if you go back, I think a minute ago, I handed you an exhibit for...
Westridge North?
Yeah, let me see. No, that's a different one. Thank you. Well, let's see. So let's back up and focus on that for a second. So, the SDP application for that, when was that one submitted?
The application date shown is February 11th, 2016.
And when was it deemed complete?
April 12th, 2016.
And on this slide, it shows July 2000, or July 19 of 2016 as the application approved date. Is that consistent with your memory of it?
Yes, I don't remember the exact date, but that sounds generally consistent with my understanding.
And so, if you look at that exhibit 105, the notice of application, what did the notice of application have to say about any sort of Platte related to the Westridge Townhomes One South?
So, it notes on the notice of application that a short Platte subdivision is also required in order to segregate the subject parcel for development. So this is significant because it's the exact situation that we have with our applications for site development permits, except for, in our case, the city decided to tell us that until the Platte was done, the SDP applications could not be accepted as complete. Here, clearly, they were accepted as complete prior to the subdivision being done and prior to the preliminary subdivision being approved. And significantly, in this case, they actually approved the SDP prior to the Platte. So, it's the extreme opposite of the position they took just a year or so later with respect to our applications.
So if you flip to the next page in S-88, it's titled, "Short Platte of Lot A." And this next exhibit would be S-106. What's the document at S-106?
S-106 is the notice of decision approving the short Platte of Lot A in Izzaquah Highlands. So this is the short Platte that's referred to in the Westridge Townhomes One Notice of Application. So this was the short Platte that created the lot that was then the subject of that SDP.
So when was that submitted? Do you recall?
Looking, let's see. Yeah, the notice of decision states that on February 2nd, 2016, the property owner submitted a short Platte application to subdivide Lot A into three lots.
Okay. And when was it approved?
And it was approved on January 6th, 2017. So that was after the SDP approval, which happened on July 19th of 2016.
Okay, so I'm mindful that we have about five minutes till 10:00. And we can do one of two things. And I know that lawyers give horrible time estimates, so I apologize in advance. But I think, I think we can get through the remainder of Ms. Heim's testimony in another 15 minutes or so if we want to stay passed. If not, we're happy to pick it up tomorrow, and we're here anyways tomorrow and can do that. Wanted to throw it out there.
I think process-wise, if we can be done in about 15 minutes, that would facilitate the cross-examination tomorrow, starting first thing, so that would make the most sense to me. Counsel, is that agreeable?
No objection from the city, Mr. Attorney.
Okay, thank you. We'll do our best to move it along, but like I said, I think about 15 minutes. Okay, so let's turn to the next page in S-88. It's Westridge Block Four Affordable Housing. And this next exhibit would be S-107. Can you describe for us what S-107 is, please?
S-107 is a notice of application for Westridge Block Four Affordable Housing ASDP.
So when was the application date for this?
April 27th, 2018.
Is that before or after the replacement regulations were adopted?
That is after the replacement regulations were adopted and effective.
When was the application deemed complete?
May 16th, 2018.
And what's the date of that notice of application?
July 17th, 2018.
What does that notice of application have to say about the standards that are going to be used to evaluate that Westridge Block Four project?
It says that the preliminary determination of development regulations that will be used for project mitigation and consistency, Izzaquah Highlands Development Agreement.
So what do you understand that to mean in terms of what regulations are going to apply to that application?
The city treated this application as vested to the Izzaquah Highlands Development Agreement despite the fact that it clearly came in after the replacement regulations were in effect. And if it were processed under the replacement regulations, it would have come here to this commission because it's also on one of the streets that are designated for commission approval.
So, were you here when Mr. Niven was, he provided some testimony on the Westridge Block Four application and was referencing an affordable housing development agreement as providing the basis for why that vesting would occur compared to shelters' applications?
Yes, I was here for that.
And let's look at exhibit C-33, please. Can you describe what the document at C-33 is?
Yes, C-33 is the developer's sales agreement for affordable units at Westridge.
Do you recall Mr. Niven providing C-33 as the basis for his testimony that the Westridge Block Four application vested because of an affordable housing agreement?
I do. I remember him pointing to this agreement as the basis for vesting those projects.
Does this agreement say anything about vesting?
It does not. It's also not a development agreement.
What is it?
It's a developer's sales agreement, which really deals with the affordable covenants that are attached to the property.
So then, let's look at exhibit S-5, please. So then let's look at Exhibit S-5, please.
Yes.
And what's Exhibit S-5?
It is also the developer's sales agreement. I think it has more attached here.
So this exhibit is -- represent is considerably longer than the other one. It's about 80 pages or so. And if you keep flipping...
Here we go.
So further along in there, what else is included in this exhibit besides the developer's sales agreement?
Also a copy of a development agreement with Polygon Northwest for the provision of affordable housing.
So just to clarify, do you recall Director Niven giving this document as a basis for his opinion, or was it just the developer's sales agreement?
Well, this document, the development agreement, was also provided by the city. I think it's at C-34. But Director Niven specifically testified that the development agreement with Polygon that is -- that we're looking at in S-5, but also that is C-34, does not address vesting and is not the basis for vesting those projects. Instead, he pointed to the developer's sales agreement and provision that addressed termination as the basis for vesting, which I found quite confusing since it's both not a development agreement and doesn't actually address vesting. But again, this, from our perspective, is another example of the city stretching and trying to find ways to make sure that they could acknowledge every other project in Isequa Highlands as vested other than our projects.
Let's look at S-108. What's the document at S-108?
This S-108 is the notice of decision for the administrative site development permit for Block Four at Isequa Highlands.
And so based on this, is it your understanding that Block Four has been approved by the city as moving forward?
Yes.
Let's flip to the next page in S-88. So it says Westridge Townhomes North Polygon Application. And this would be Exhibit S-109 that we'll look at next. So S-109, what's that document?
S-109 is the notice of application for the Westridge Townhomes North Site Development Permit.
When was that applied for?
October 20, 2017.
And what's the -- when was it determined complete?
October 30, 2017, 10 days after the application was submitted.
Did this one -- was this one of the ones that went out with shelters notice of application for the platte?
Yes, it did go -- get noticed with our platte. I think it's also significant that it's -- to compare it to our projects because it's a site development permit applied for in the same timeframe as our site development permits. So this is post-build-out period, but still during the effective term of the development And it's the same type of permit as at least one of the permits that's before you.
And what's your understanding about what development regulations were being applied to this Westridge Townhomes North application?
The city treated this as vested to the development standards enacted by the development agreement.
And this next document would be S-110. What's the document at S-110?
This is a notice of decision for Westridge Townhomes North Site Development Permit.
And what's the date of that?
Approval date, May 10, 2018.
What does it have to say about the development regulations that were applied to that project?
It says, "Whereas even though the Isequa Highlands Development Agreement was terminated on March 28, 2018, and replacement regulations IMC 18.19B have been enacted, this application was vested to the now-terminated development agreement and was reviewed under those regulations."
Why was this application reviewed under the development regulations adopted through the development agreement and vested to those, but shelters wasn't, according to the city?
Well, I mean, they both should have been processed under the -- and analyzed under the development standards, under the development agreement. The only explanations that I've heard were that they vested through a development agreement. And then, as you've heard from Mr. Niven, the only development agreement that the city has entered into with Polygon with respect to this property is that Affordable Housing Development Agreement, which he testified does not address vesting. And we agree, it does not address vesting. So I don't know how they justify treating this one one way and treating ours a different way. But they both were vested to the development -- to the development standards enacted by the development agreement per the terms of that development agreement, which are what applied to both applications.
Does this document indicate whether Appendix L and the requirements in Appendix L in terms of the process were applied to this application as well?
It does reference Appendix L, Processing of Land Use and Construction Permits. And it references that the hearings were held in accordance with Appendix L, so they followed Appendix L for this application.
And again, when did the build-out period end? Can you remind us of that?
The build-out period ended in September of 2017, so before this site development permit application was deemed complete.
So with all these different applications, what's your understanding of the procedures and the timelines that the city has been applying to them? And when I say all these different applications, I'm talking about the ones other than shelters projects that we just went through.
Well, for all of these projects that we've been discussing, the city is applying the development standards and the process that are set forth in the development agreement. So they're treating it as fully vested to development standards and process. If they didn't, if they somehow -- they've told us from time to time that we wouldn't vest a process even if we were vested. And if that were the case, if they were treating these other applications that way, then you would have seen these other applications come before you because the ASDP for the Block Four Affordable Housing fronts on Ellis. And per the replacement regulations, if that's what was needing to be followed, it would have come here to this commission, and it didn't. Instead, you've seen all of these applications either get an administrative approval written by the administrative staff, or they went to UVDC, which would be following the procedure in the development agreement.
So I guess then to wrap up, to clarify, because we've heard a lot of testimony about the vested rights issue, is there any dispute that shelters applications don't comply with the replacement regulations?
No, I think you heard that from us on day one, and we will continue to tell you that these applications do not comply with the replacement regulations because they were designed and submitted in accordance with the development standards enacted by the development agreement.
So what's your understanding of why we're here today?
We are just trying to move forward with our applications. They are vested under the development -- to the development standards that were enacted by the development agreement. We've been asking the city since March of 2018, when we delivered the notice of default to comply with the development agreement and process our applications. Well, we were asking actually previous to that, but at that point, it became more involved from a legal perspective, and we've been simply trying to get to a decision on vesting that we can appeal to a body with jurisdiction. And while we really appreciate you all taking the time to sit and listen to all of this testimony, we continue to believe, as we stated at the very beginning of this hearing, that it is unnecessary and inappropriate, and the city should have just issued a decision that was appealable and let the vesting issue get decided by a body with jurisdiction.
Thank you. I think that concludes for this evening and for Ms. Heim's testimony. And to a point that she just made, we do thank you very much for staying over for your time. We really appreciate that. So with that, we're closed for Ms. Heim for now. I guess tomorrow evening would be the opportunity for the city to pick up on cross-examination.
Yes.
Okay.
And Zach, do you have an idea of how long that will take, whether it would be the whole time tomorrow evening or something shorter than that?
Probably somewhat shorter than that. I can't unfortunately estimate with too much specificity, and you'll go back and review my notes for this evening's proceeding, but I would anticipate that it will not last the full three and a half hours.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
So we've reached a little past the agreed-upon time when we're going to adjourn. The public hearings on tonight's agenda will be continued to a special meeting of the commission on March 6, tomorrow, and the council chambers at 6:30. The meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.